Present, arm. Order, arm. Rightward turn, move. Forward, march.
Oh, say can you see, I'm the outermost light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars were the perilous sight; for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bunsper singing in it, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, say how that star-spangled banner yet quays! For the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Thank you, and now Rabbi Yefiel Morris of El Yisroel will offer our invitation.
Goodly Father, we've assembled here this evening to square into office elected officials of our great city of Southfield. In this most wonderful moment, we ask you to take note of our dedication and commitment to the spirit of democracy, which has made our blessed country, the United States of America, so great and unique in world's history. As we stand before you, we recognize and understand that the city of Southfield is a model for that which makes America's democracy stand. Southfield is a city of multicultural diversity, a city comprised of individuals and families of varying cultural, religious, ethnic backgrounds. Our diversity is our strength. It has given us the opportunity to learn and respect the differences of our neighbors and to work together for the common good of our community. We offer our prayers that you allow us to continue to respect one another and live together in harmony and peace. In these challenging times of economic hardship and recent devastating weather-related storms, we beseech you to have compassion and mercy upon individuals and communities in our country and throughout the world during their time of need. Grant hope, determination, help, and salvation to those longing for your divine protection and comforts. Allow them the strength and resolve to navigate through their difficulties and provide them the opportunities to overcome their challenges so that they will be able to see and experience a better and brighter future. Lastly, we pray this evening that you, the Supreme King of Kings, guard and protect our constituted officers of government. Grant them insight and understanding to carry out their responsibilities with wisdom, honesty, and integrity. Allow them to humbly debate the great issues of the day in a spirit of mutual respect and harmony. Let them work together for the common good of our city and grant them success in their endeavors. Bless them with continued strength, vitality, and health for themselves, their families, and the outstanding residents and employees of our beloved city. May this be your will, and let us respond. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please be seated. We're delighted to have you here with us tonight to thus wish our elected local officials many effective years of work on your behalf. First, we wish to announce several of the dignitaries who are also here with us this evening. Joining us this evening are state economic officials or their representatives. I would ask you please to hold your applause until I introduce them all. Please stand where you may stand as I call your names. Mr. Charles Robinson, representing State Senator Vincent Gregory's office. We also welcome our former city council members, including Susan Goldstein and Barbara Tallow. We also welcome the distinguished officials of the Forty-Sixth District Court, Judge Sheila Johnson and Chief Judge William Richards. And we also tonight welcome a member of the Southfield Public Service Board, Fern Katz. If I hold my hand, please stand. Thank you. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce our keynote speaker for this evening, the Honorable Chief Judge William Richards of the Forty-Sixth District Court. Chief Justice William Richards was appointed to the Forty-Sixth District Court in 2007 by Governor Jennifer Granville. In 2008, voters elected him to a two-year term. In 2010, voters re-elected him to a full six-year term. Judge Richards is a longtime local resident with a distinguished career in government, teaching, and private practice. He's a former deputy general director, the principal deputy into the Michigan Attorney General's Office from 1999 to 2002, and former Assistant U.S. Attorney from 1989 to 1998, where he prosecuted public corruption and drug crimes. In the United States Attorney's Office, Judge Richards served as ethics officer for nine years. Earlier, he was a staff attorney in the Federal Defense Office and law clerk to U.S. District Judge Cornelia Kennedy. Judge Richards has taught advanced criminal procedure at Cooley Law School. He is a former president of Oakland-Livingston Legal Aid, where he helped provide free legal aid to the poor and seniors. Judge Richards is a member of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force, a judge of the National Black Law Students Association Annual New Court Competition, and a member in the Volunteers in Prevention VIP Program for Youth. Judge Richards was a volunteer fundraiser for the Susan Coleman Breast Cancer Foundation and serves on the board for the Southfield Centers for Youth Incorporated Fields of Anne Green Path, a nonprofit credit counseling agency. He's a member of first congregation of church. William Richards earned both his bachelor's degree and his law degree from the University of Michigan. Judge Richards and his wife Joan have been married for forty-two years and have two daughters, Jennifer and Kristen, and two grandchildren. We are honored to have him here with us this evening. Please join me in welcoming the Honorable Chief Judge William Richards.
Thank you, Dave, for that kind introduction. I'm going to have to update that biography, John. I've been married for forty-four years. The part I don't have to update is that I still am a University of Michigan man. And last weekend, my wife and I headed to Chicago for the Michigan versus Northwestern triple-overtime thriller. As happens every time I go to Chicago, I turn a little green with envy. It's marvelous downtown. It's skyscrapers. It's shoreline along our lake, Lake Michigan. It's vibrant downtown, twenty or so restaurants within walking distance of our hotel, the seemingly endless health of a city. And yet, as I picked up the Chicago Tribune on Sunday morning, I saw a summary of the editorial for that day urging city council and the mayor in Chicago to address the problem of runaway pension costs and that city's thirty-billion-dollar debt. As we live one short distance north of our sister city Detroit, does that sound familiar? And isn't it a reminder of how much faith and trust we have to put in our elected leaders to make sensible, rational decisions that are good for not just today, but tomorrow, and tomorrow's tomorrow? This week, we also acknowledge and mark the fiftieth anniversary of President Kennedy's assassination. And so it's appropriate to rededicate ourselves as public officials and elected officials to the ideals of public service for which he stood: diligence, selflessness, and integrity. And it is not inappropriate to remind our citizens of what he said in that inaugural address. If I may paraphrase it, ask not what your city can do for you, ask what you can do for your city. And so if we are to survive and thrive, as Lincoln said, in a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, we must rededicate ourselves to all those ideals of public service. And if we do that, I submit to you tonight, we cannot fail to make this city our city, the city of Southfield, an even better place to work and live. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, for your support and for your words. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight with your busy schedule. And now Chief Judge William Richards will administer the Oath of Office to City Clerk Nancy Allen Banks.
We have many duties as public officials and banks. This is one of the busiest and most pleasant. So, if you'll repeat after me and we'll go just afresh at a time, will you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of mayor in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability.
I will.
Congratulations.
And now Chief Judge, Chief Judge William Richards, assisted by Southland City Clerk Nancy Allen Banks, will administer the Oath of Office to our newly elected city officials. Mayor Brenda Lawrence.
And if you'll raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of mayor in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
And now Councilwoman Donald Perretti.
You've done this before. Will you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of councilman in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
And now Councilwoman Myra Frecher.
Well, you're not a rookie either. If you'll raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of councilman in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
And now Councilwoman Joan Seymour.
Another veteran, will you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of councilman in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability? Congratulations.
And now Councilwoman Kimson Stocker.
You're familiar with this drill, too, sir? If you'll raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of a councilman in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
And now Chief Treasurer Erv Rollender.
You should be familiar also, sir. If you'll raise your right hand, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of City Treasurer in and for the city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, according to the best of your ability? My love, congratulations.
And although they are not part of tonight's sorting and ceremony, they are with us here tonight, elected officials, Councilwoman Sophia Jordan Next on our program is a brief stating council meeting. Madam Mayor, members of city councils, Mr. Treasurer, and Madam Clerk, would you please take your seats for the meeting?
Good evening. This is a council, a regular meeting, the Southfield City Council for November eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. Ms. Banks, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Mr. Priti Askey?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Ma?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
You have seven members present.
Would you all rise for the presence of the Speaker?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a, going to be a partrick reading. We only have one item on the agenda, and that is the annual election of council officers. I'd like to start with nominations for council president.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I nominate Sophia Jordan for council president.
Support. They've moved into court. Are there any other nominations for council president? Hearing none, then I move that the nominations be closed. And all of whom favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Jordan, congratulations. If I may, could you? Will the election of council president pro temp?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I nominate Don Ficassi for a presbytery pro temp.
Okay. Any other nominations for council president pro temp? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All of whom favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Ficassi. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Now, please join me in the warm welcome for Mayor Brenda Ellen Lawrence, who will offer her.
I want to start with my remarks by congratulating those who have been re-elected. And just knowing that we always have a fresh and new opportunity to do the things that we take our oath to do, I've had the pleasure of serving with this council. I know them very well, and I know each of them has an amazing passion for this city and has shown it in many different ways. And it's the work that we have to do to keep this city a place that we're proud to call home requires all hands on deck. And I want to thank them, and I want to thank our city administrator, Mr. Jim Scherrack. I want to thank the amazing staff that we have in the city of Southfield. I want to thank my police and fire chief, who I speak to often. I want to thank those who are HR people, our IT people, our cable. There are so many different departments, our treasurer's department, our consulting department, that every day come to work to take care of the people in this great city. And I want to say as the mayor of Southfield, I stand on the shoulders of all these individuals because when I step out into communities and when I travel, I'm the mayor of the city of Southfield. And I could not do it alone. And I know that my responsibility and the pride that I take in this community is not only those who work every day and are paid to do or are elected to do, but also those who give them the strength, those of you who invest and take care of your property, those of you who keep an eye on your senior citizen or look out for the child walking down the street, those who come to these meetings and hold us accountable, and those of you who voted, most of all. And I can say that I have not been totally satisfied on the election day, because so few vote. But in this room, everyone that's here, I know you voted because you're here. But I want to say thank you, and thank you for exercising your rights to this democracy of voting. And what you see happening is what make us Americans. The transfer of power in so many countries come with bloodshed and comes with so much conflict. And while we have heated elections, and I wanted to congratulate those who ran, even if that final number was not a quote-unquote "win," I consider you a winner because you stood up and you believed enough to invest your time, your belief, your philosophy, and you made the sacrifice to run. I'm grateful that this is four things. I want to thank my family. Many of you know my husband, the judge has been beat. We only have forty-two years. But I want to thank my husband, Mac Lawrence, who has no political wrong with his body, but he loves Brenda Lawrence. My granddaughter, and many of you know, on election day, on the cover of a paper, when I was elected mayor, she was on my hip. Agent, would you just stand up? She is now thirteen years old. This is my baby. And I have to thank the baby who gave me the baby. So my daughter is standing in the back from my lovely Michelle. And the rest of my family is here with my sister, my oldest sister, the toddler, and me, and the baby and the family. And I can tell you, it's the greatest position to be in. And she really caught it with me growing up. But I love you, Patty, and thank you for being here. I just want to say a couple things before I leave the mic. Today marks a continuation of the journey of public service. I have stepped up to the plate to the steps. I never take that oath lightly, and I hope my service reflects that to you. I know that I'm to be responsible. I know I'm to be ethical. And as the mayor, the face of this city, I need to know that my actions and how I conduct myself is a reflection on our city, and I take that very seriously. It's just some amazing chapters in my life, and I've cut so many ribbons in these last twelve years. The one that I think about the most is that ribbon to that library now. Let me go over a little bit. Cutting ribbons to economic development and being there when companies and individuals have invested in building the economy and giving jobs in this city. I have broke ground for many new buildings to go up. I've stood in classrooms for college students, for kindergartens, for high schoolers, and talked about public service and encouraging them to be involved. That's amazing, and then they share their stories and their history. And I have been able to work with some amazing elected officials. And also, some of you call it fighting, but I use all of my, my ability and communication skills to persuade some of these guys up here. But in that debate, it's always, my agenda is to preserve those laws and those policies that has made Southfield a great place, but not allow us to be complacent. The term that we've never done that in Southfield, or I don't know what you're talking about, is not acceptable. We have to evolve, and we have to evolve in using new technologies. And we have, if you look at, many of you saw that article about what we're planning on Evergreen Road, all of these individuals are involved in that. And we are going to do some exciting things, and Southfield's going to look differently. But we will never, never sacrifice the quality of life that we expect in this great city. And in closing, I just want to say that public service is not easy. It is not an easy job. Many of you see us stand here, and we get to praying, and the accolades, we get invited, introduced everywhere we go. There are so many times in this job, because my husband tells me this all the time, you take a oath and put a bull's eye in your back, and you become retarded. Sometimes you get it right, but when you don't, it's public. You know, as a private citizen, you get to make mistakes in private, but when you're a public figure, everything that you do is public, and others screw you. So I would be sure of a day of that bull's eye. I'm proud to be your mayor, and God bless you, God bless Southfield, and God bless you, United States. Thank you.
will offer a little speech.
Good evening. Please light this for the vision, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you, my God, for each elected official who has been here this evening. We pray, my God, that they take offense and make decisions for this great city of Southfield, that they will have a clear mind, my God, and a heart for the people. I pray that you will bless these ones, oh, my God, I pray that you will keep them, I pray that you will let your face shine upon them on this day, Lord, and be gracious unto them. I pray that you will lift up your house upon them and give them peace in everything they do, Lord. Now, I pray that the peace of God that surpasses our understanding will keep all of our hearts and our minds through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Thomas. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening for this program. I'm sure the coming years will be filled with wonderful things for the city of Southfield. We'll now return to the Pavilion Corps of Reception in honor of our newly elected officials. Thank you, and good evening.